Commissioner Anderson will be joining us by Zoom today. I hope your recovery is coming along well.
Thanks, it is.
Item three, identify future work meeting topics.
I'm good.
Okay, I seen through the grapevine that the school has purchased, ACWL has purchased the building, so I'm not too sure where where that would put us at the county or what their intentions are, but maybe we can have some sort of discussion in the in the future or have a work meeting.
I can certainly look into that, Mr. Chairman. I have not been informed of that formally nor as a county to my knowledge. And I don't know what that means or what their intentions are going forward, so we can certainly investigate that and get something back to you shortly.
Thank you. Seeing no other topics coming forward, we'll move on to item four, Organization Restructure of Health and Human Services Economic Assistance Division.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Anne Lethal. I'm the Economic Assistance Division Director. And I'm here with Will Habrak, who is our IMU Program Processing Program Manager, and Kurt Anderson, who is our Workforce Impact and IMU Intake Program Manager. And we wanted to bring forward this informational presentation at this point in time to talk with you about what's suggested or recommended organizational structural changes that only impact the Economic Assistance Division of Health and Human Services. So in October, we had a retirement of our family lead eligibility worker. She had been with us for 31 years and she retired from that position and it gave us the opportunity to really look at how we're using that particular FTE. The current organizational structure has been in place for almost a decade. And so we've had numerous changes during that time. And so we wanted to take a step back and see if we wanted to replace that lead position or if we could maybe shuffle our resources to fill some gaps that we have currently. And we determined after some conversations with our leadership team and Becky Seacor, our director, we determined that there is a more efficient way to utilize that FTE. And so I'm gonna tell you what our proposal is and then I'll talk a little bit about what's changed and how this proposed structural change helps us to meet the needs of those changes. So what we'd like to do is we would like to eliminate the family lead eligibility worker. We call it an ES2 position. And we would like to shift that FTE to our adult program by adding a line staff eligibility worker to our adult programs. Our adult and healthcare programs have been growing while our family programs have been decreasing in numbers over the past few years. So that is a place that we need more resources. We would also like to create two new positions. We would like to create a consolidated intake lead. And I've been to the board a couple of times to talk about consolidated intake. Consolidated intake in Health and Human Services is where we took numerous different reception areas in the building and we consolidated it into one area. So about 90% of the population that comes in for services at HHS goes to that one place. That has really been successful. We've seen a lot of efficiencies come out of that consolidated intake plan. But what we've also seen is that we do need a dedicated lead in that area to focus on the training, the scheduling, and getting information from other areas in the agency for that consolidated area. So that's one of the new positions that we're proposing. That would be a promotion from current staff. So it would not be an additional FTE. We would look at our consolidated intake case aids and we would promote from that area. And then the second created position is the Workforce Impact Lead. In 2017, we ended a contract with our outside employment service agency and we took that in-house. And we have a program now called Workforce Impact, which this board has heard much about. And with that change, that's definitely not something that was in place when we created our current structure. So we would like to look at creating a workforce impact lead, again promoting from within, from current staff, to really be the policy specialist around that employment service piece. Because we do have the supervisor there that has taken on some other roles in the agency to meet unmet needs. So those, that's the proposal, the elimination of that ES2, the addition of an FTE, an adult, and the creation of two internally promoted positions. So this is a cost neutral change. If we eliminate that position that annually was $74,198 at the mid-grade step five, it is reimbursed 50% by DHS. And so then if you look at the proposed costs for the new positions and the change in the FTE title, the annual cost would be $67,792.50% again reimbursed by DHS. And then the consolidated intake lead would add an increased cost of $5,429 reimbursed at 50%. And the workforce impact lead actually would be 100% reimbursed by DHS. Our workforce impact program is fully covered by the consolidated fund. So there would be no county cost. This actually, in this equation saves the county about 500 bucks. So it's basically cost neutral change. So what are the changes that have really made us think about making this organizational change? There's been a lot, but I've highlighted some of the big ones. We have seen a decrease in our family cash cases. So that that is an area that has been decreasing over the years. And we've also seen astronomical growth in housing supports and LTC program. For example, our housing support program has grown by 70% in the last five years. So we're seeing these adult programs really grow at a fast pace. LTC programs are growing. We have an aging population. We're a regional hub. So we have a lot of people who are eligible for those LTC programs, long-term care programs. And then we've seen growth in healthcare programs. Healthcare, we do have typically about a quarter of our population in Beltrami County who receive a healthcare benefit from our office. Currently, that's going on about a third. We are growing. We've grown by about 2,000 cases in the last two years during the COVID pandemic. And honestly, I don't know that all of those cases will fall off when that federal state of emergency ends. I'm thinking about 50%. That's just, you know, reading the tea leaves, but looking at our our average amount that our family of four earns in Beltrami County, it's likely that at least the children are going to be continued eligible for MA programming. So we're seeing that increase. Another change that we've seen in the last eight years is when we put the lead positions in place, we were operating under case banking. We now have a great hybrid way of operating. We have caseloads in some units where it's going to benefit the client and the agency to do so, like family cash programs, our caseload. And in some areas, we still have case banking where the the volume is such that we just can't have a caseload. There's too many cases. So that's changed since we put the current structure in place. Of course, we have employment services internally now since 2017. So we want to create more collaboration between our financial assistance side and our employment service side. We have made great strides in that since we took that on, but we can still do a better job. And I think this new structure is going to help us do a better job with that collaboration. And then again, consolidated intake has become a reality. That's just happened within the last two years. So we need to provide some support there. So lots of changes. And this structure is going to help us to put our resources into those growing areas, adult programs, healthcare programs. And it's really going to look at consolidating program areas. So family programming on the financial side is going to be under the same supervisor, the same lead, and work very closely with our employment service team. It's going to provide that organizational support to consolidated intake and it's going to give workforce impact a dedicated policy specialist. So and of course, the benefit of it being budget neutral. So there's a current organizational structure versus the proposed structure and basically we are taking this line right here away from our IMU. Well, I'll explain. So we're taking one team and we're moving it from Will's group, IMU Processing, into Kurt's team, which is IMU Intake and Workforce Impact. And we're putting that family team under the same lead as our IMU intake worker. So basically, we're creating a flow of a case. So when someone comes in and applies for cash assistance, they go through intake work, the intake unit first, then their transition to the family cash processing unit. And of course, when you're on family cash, you work with employment services. All of those things would be under one supervisor and they would be, the policy specialists would be the two leads that work under that one supervisor. So we're really creating a flow of a case for both the client and for the agency. It just makes it more efficient to work through that case. Currently, the structure is set up that if we have a case coming through intake, if there's an issue with that case along the way, we would have two supervisors and two leads from two different teams that would have to work together to come to a solution. So we're just trying to find a way to make that a little bit more efficient, which this change does. So how does it impact the future of economic assistance? We want to be efficient. We want to be nimble with our program management. We want to optimize our resources. This change does all of those things. And this is a good move for us right now. We're gonna be optimizing the efficiencies that we can. But we do have to look at a multifaceted approach moving forward. We really have a lot going on in economic assistance and it's really hard to see what the future holds for us. COVID has created a lot of challenges across the board and and we're not unique in that. But what we're seeing right now is growth in caseloads. For an example, in January, we had 200 more applications for cash and food and emergency than in a typical January. So we're seeing some increases there. Like I mentioned, we have some pretty significant increases in healthcare cases. And I don't, you know, I can't say, looking into the future, is that going to continue? Are we going to see changes there? I have, you know, I have some thoughts around it, but I really can't say how that's going to look in the future. But what we want to do is set ourselves up so that we are in the best position possible to take on these challenges as they come to us. And I think the structure is going to do that, but we're also going to have to look at technology solutions. We're gonna have to look at appropriate staffing if we continue to see these increases in numbers. So this isn't the solution that's going to end all. This is just part of the process of making us as efficient as we can be. So there is, that right now, we're just providing this information. There is a process to making an organizational change that also involves Springstead completing some information for us, which they have graded the pay grades for the new positions, but we do need the position description still. We will have to talk with the union and then, of course, we would come back to the board for final approval of this. But for now, is there anything that my counterparts would like to add? Okay, do you guys have any questions?
Mr. Chair, just wondering if the financial numbers include everything, include the benefits and stuff like that as well, or if it's strictly numbers. Okay?
Yep, I added in the benefit.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I have no questions and seeing my colleagues. Doesn't look like they are. So you did a great job with your presentation.
Oh, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson, did you have any questions? I'm sorry.
No, no, I didn't have any questions. I just, I do believe that whenever we lose a position in that arena, it's important to take a look at it to see if there's some changes that will benefit our constituents. And they've done that. Thanks.
All right, so we will move on to item five, Sanford Health Projects and Initiatives. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Susan Jarvis, President and CEO, Sanford Health and Order Minnesota, and happy to come today and give you some updates and answer any questions that you might have. So with a little last minute heroics, we got the presentation through the system. So we have it and I'll begin. So just a mission, ambition, and values for Sanford are here. And then see. There we go. Our strategic position and what we're striving for at Sanford is to be the premier rural health system in the United States. And so we serve a really rural population here in Bemidji and and in our footprint. And so really proud to to do what it takes to take care of our patients in our communities as close to home as possible. So our, we consider our service area, what you see on the map here. So we have within our footprint of Sanford Health in Northern Minnesota, we have two hospitals. So the hospital here in Bemidji and then the hospital over in Bagley, which is a critical access hospital. And then we also, in the other stars areas that you see, have either clinics or areas that we outreach to. So all the way up to the Canadian border and then down to Park Rapids over to Thief River. The Thief River Falls Hospital is actually in the Fargo footprint of Sanford. But we outreach over there and send doctors over there to see patients over there. So quite the, quite the footprint up here in Northwestern Minnesota. So just some quick information about Sanford Health in Northern Minnesota. We have 118 licensed beds here in Bemidji, 25 in Bagley. It's critical access. We are the largest employer in the region. So our payroll and benefits equates to about $175 million a year just in this region. We are seeing almost 30,000 visits into our two ERs annually. Most of those are here in Bemidji, about 26,600 in Bemidji and then the rest over in Bagley. We perform almost 100,000 imaging tests a year in that footprint that I showed you. About 1,700 patients come in, have procedures in our cath labs, 5,800 admissions to our hospitals. Our average daily census is around 71 patients. We generally have around 80 to 85 patients actually in the hospital. But some of those are in either observation or outpatient status, maybe after a procedure or waiting to see if they need to be in an inpatient status. We perform about 800 births a year. Those are all in Bemidji. We see around 33,200 patients in our walk-in clinic. And so more than we see in the EDs, we actually see in the walk-in clinic and almost 300,000 visits a year. We're pretty proud of some of the quality metrics that we've achieved lately. We were in April of 2021 awarded our first ever four-star rating by the Center for Medicare Medicaid Services, our main payer, and they rate hospitals throughout the country that participate in in CMS payments, which is most of them. And so we have really worked very, very hard on our quality around the domains that you see mentioned there, safety, mortality, effectiveness, being patient-centered, efficient, and equity. And so we went from a two-star hospital to a four-star hospital last year on a five-star scale. Very proud of that. So I was asked to update you on some key initiatives, what's happening in 2022 and beyond. So one of the ones that you are all extremely aware of is the Behavioral Health Crisis Center. That is, that was, that's a partnership between the county and with Sanford that is going to be great for to meet the needs of the patients in our community. I think you all know this, but the new center will be the region's only inpatient behavioral health crisis center and empath unit. Empath is an emergency psychiatric assessment, treatment, and healing unit. And so it's a, it's an environment for patients who are having a mental health crisis where they can present and kind of basically be surrounded by the care that they need. And again, this is a partnership between Beltrami County and Sanford Health. We broke ground back in October. Many of you were there and very excited about this facility opening the, in the fall. There are two other empath units, but they are down near the city. So we'll be the third in the state and the only one that will treat adolescents and children in the Crisis Center Park. And the price tag of this one up a little bit to $6.2 million. And part of the reason for the increase in the price is we took a look at at what was needed in the community and we did add eight adult psychiatric inpatient beds to this project prior to the project being started. And so really excited about those eight beds. Right now, our patients who need inpatient care have to travel. Well, the closest inpatient unit is Thief River Falls, so 90 miles away. And so eight beds is not going to nearly be enough. We could, we'll fill up the eight beds probably in the first two to three days we're open. But it is a start and something for us to build from. So this just shows you the, it's opening fall of 2022, 12,000 total square feet, $6.2 million. So the, the crisis unit with the empath model and then the eight adult psychiatric inpatient beds. So how are we coming on that? Kraus Anderson is our construction partner on this and they were very excited to let us know at the end of last week that they have the, they have the exterior walls completely up now and they were able to put heat into the building. So they're about 35% complete. But there is heat and so they're going to be able to work through the winter on the inside of the building and they are on track for for completion of the project and opening in the fall. So they've, they've been out there even when it's been 30 below. If it's not too windy, they've been working and now being able to move inside, it'll move along even more quickly. So progress is doing, is is moving quite along. Moving along quite well. I was also asked to give an update about the Prime West Residential Support Center. So I have some information on that. And if you have other questions, shake open your hand with me as well to answer any of those that you might have. But this is another partnership with the county. The Sanford Health Prime West Residential Support Center opened in August of 2019, so just prior to COVID. To date, we've admitted 67 patients. And so where are those patients coming from? 65% have come from Region 2, so Beltrami County, Clearwater, Hubbard, and Lake of the Woods counties. The remaining 35% were referred and transferred from Crow Wing, Otter Tail, Cass, Pennington, and St. Louis counties. So the majority of these patients are patients who are in the ERTS care. The longer average length to stay for them, they they stay about, they can stay up to 90 days and many of them stay for that entire time. 41 of those patients who have, who we've treated have returned successfully to a functioning level in the community or the home. And then 26 either were discharged against medical advice or had to be transferred to a higher level of care. Some plans for that building include, and this was, these were plans that were there originally, but some issues with the construction as well as the COVID pandemic put these on hold for just a little while. But we are planning to do withdrawal management detox services in this building as well. We are currently recruiting an RN coach that will lead the program. And the tentative go-live plan is to go live in the fall of 2022 with four beds. There are some issues with the state and licensing with the number of beds. And so we're working through that with the state. And also the way the rooms are constructed. So we're working through that as well. The, these will only be for adults and they, the, the good thing about this is this is in close proximity to the emergency department for patients who are needing help with medical detox. If they need transfer to the ED, then they will be transferred over there. Right now, these patients are being managed in, in the hospital itself. Okay, so some other things that are going on besides behavioral health. We just added four new beds to the ICU. So we went from 10 to 14 beds. This was really in response to the pandemic. The ICU was full pretty much all the time. And so since we've opened the additional four beds back late last fall, those beds have been full as well. And so we've been able, there's a picture up there on the right. It's, if you've ever been up on the fourth floor in the ICU, there was a hallway kind of behind the ICU that we just opened up and were able to add beds over and it's continuous to the ICU. Really can't tell that it wasn't planned to be there in, in the first place. The beds turned out really, really nice. Some other things upcoming, we moved our acute rehab unit off of the fourth floor to create our COVID unit back at the, in the initial surge of the pandemic. And so we're going to be bringing the acute rehab unit back onto campus. We've had some of these patients over in Bagley, some on our regular med surg floor. We're going to be relocating this and downsizing it just a little bit. It was a 12-bed unit. Average daily census over there runs around six to seven. So we're going to be creating an eight-bed unit for the actually seven-bed unit and the ability to flex up to eight beds for acute rehab. And that'll be happening this year. And it'll be on the second floor. We also, our telemetry unit is going to be moving up to the fourth floor. So I'll have ICU in telemetry. That's kind of the more acute patients, places for patients that we see. And we're going to be moving from 12 to 15 beds. This is another unit that's also full most of the time. We're going to be converting all of our med surg beds to private rooms, which is well-needed. Really, we should have done that a long time ago and really needed. So if you can imagine, it's not always pleasant to be in the hospital anyway. And then when you're in a room with someone you don't know and you have family members and, you know, that are that are, maybe you want to sleep and the, and the other patient's family is in there. And anyway, so it's just not real conducive to healing. And so it's going to be really nice. We'll be doing that this year, too. We are adding one additional operating room in our main OR. That'll be done by the end of the year. And we're also upgrading the ancillary support for the OR, especially central sterile, sterile processing, adding an autoclave and remodeling somewhat to make that more efficient for the ORs because we do have a new surgeon coming this month and a new orthopedic surgeon coming in the summer. We're also going to be doing some more workover in the Cancer Center. Our linear accelerator, which is the machine that delivers radiation therapy to our patients, is in the life. And so when the new Cancer Center was built, we anticipated needing to replace this with a different machine. And so there's a vault that was constructed but not finished out. That vault will be finished out this year and the new linear accelerator will be placed in that vault. The good thing about doing it that way is we won't have any downtime. The old linear accelerator will continue to operate in its space until we bring the new one up. The new one is much more efficient. We'll be able to do more patient radiation treatments in a day than we are now. And it really is a pinpoint radiation therapy treatment for patients with cancer. And then next year, we plan in, in the space that that vault is in, we plan to move the, we have a PET CT scanner that's a mobile unit that's outside of the hospital. And that helps us with diagnosis and treatment for patients with cancer. Helps you plan the radiation that you need. We're going to be moving that inside. And we have some other things happening around service line growth. We've hired a new palliative care physician for patients at end of life to help with that transition. We're going to be opening a walk-in spine clinic for patients with back pain. And we are, we have now receiving outreach from Fargo for, we have pediatric oncologists coming. There's about 300 patients in our footprint that annually have to travel outside of our footprint for pediatric oncology. So now we're bringing that, those services to those patients so that they don't have to travel. One of our pitch points, especially now with maybe hopefully the downturn of COVID is the emergency department. And so you're probably going to see some planning pretty soon around how we're gonna expand the emergency department. We're working on that through our master facility planning process. But we are already about five beds short from what we need in the emergency department. And when we project our growth out over five to 10 years, we really are seeing a need to expand in the emergency department. So more to come on that. And we have just completed our Community Health Needs Assessment, which is a process that that we go through every three years to help determine in the community, what are the needs that, what are the healthcare needs that we have? And you can see here the nine needs that were identified through the process that we employed. Employment income, access to affordable healthcare, access to quality healthcare, healthy living, mental health, affordable housing, public transportation, childcare quality and community safety. So those are the nine needs that were identified. And then we at Sanford go through a process of determining what we have in place that meets these needs and what things we need to put in place to help meet these needs in the community. And mental health has always been one that's really risen to the top, not just in our community, but, but across the, the nation actually. And so in, that's one of the reasons, you know, the, the partnership for the behavioral health crisis center, because mental health has, has been at the top of our, these are not in any particular order, but it's been one of our top identified needs for Kwangwae. And as I said, we really have strategies under all of these. The harder one is affordable housing, a lot that we can do as healthcare system about that, but the other things. And then the last thing, I just wanted to give you an update is just where we are with the planning of the proposed wellness center. I think you're all aware that there was a project that was discussed and planned a while back that was going to be on the Sanford campus and then that did not come to fruition. And so a year or two ago, we re-kevilled the idea of a wellness center on, perhaps on the rail corridor area that you see the picture up there on the top right that is their, the, that city owns, the, the city owns this piece of property and, and they're looking for developing, they're looking for development of that property and had some different ideas around how to do that. And so in partnership with the city, with Kraus Anderson Development and with Greater Bemidji, we've been working on a proposal for what if we put the, the proposed wellness center there? That's what you see on the left. That's just a kind of a rendering of how it could be. Nothing has been completely decided. But what if we were able to put that in that area and then develop additional, not a Sanford, but a developer, develop the rest of that area to revitalize that piece of property? What could it look like and what might it mean? And so where we are right now is the city and Kraus Anderson Development entered into a memorandum of understanding for Kraus Anderson to have a period of time to develop, to, to determine what could be developed in that area. So that time period is happening right now. The other thing that is happening is there are soul samples that have been taken, additional soul samples from what the city had done a few years ago to make sure that if we were to put something with like aquatics and things that would be a little different from the soul, from what was, what was studied earlier, would it work? And so we're waiting on the, those soul samples to come back. And then there is a fundraising component because the way we're proposing to do this now is Kraus Anderson would work with the city on how the property transfers and that type of thing, but then they would develop and build the wellness center. And then Sanford would, she would agree to operate it for a period of 20 to 25 years with a lease, basically a lease purchase. And so we're doing some fundraising around that as well for, for the assistance with the lease for the long-term purchase of the, of the facility. But again, Sanford would, would operate it and continue on to operate it in perpetuity once, once it was owned. So, so a lot of moving parts on this one, something that, that we're excited about. When you go back to that community health needs assessment around wellness, when you think about, you know, when it's whatever it is, temperature out there today and there's not a lot to do inside, something that we think would be great for us, especially around recruitment of the staff and physicians that we need to take care of our community and, and keep people close to home. That's all I have prepared. I don't know if anyone has any questions or wants me to cover anything else.
Questions?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Yeah, thank you for coming and talking to us today. And I, I, I know that you're, you know, you, you haven't even finished both of the, the mental health facilities that you are, that you're in the middle of. Do you have any, any eye on continuing that, that run and, and expanding? I mean, that's, that's, it's great that we're doing what we are doing, but we know that it's not enough. So are you, do you have eyes on, on further building out the mental health care capacity?
Absolutely. So as I said earlier, the eight inpatient beds are really just a drop in the bucket and we would love to be, be able to provide inpatient adolescent care as well and care for children. And, and we're going to need more inpatient adult beds as well. So I, I, like I said, I believe this is just the beginning.
Okay, super. And then my last comment I'll just make is I'm, I'm very happy to see that you have identified lack of stable housing in our community as, as a direct, you know, threat to quality healthcare, you know, and in, in the, my day job, I get to see that firsthand what happens when, when people don't have adequate housing, the, one of the first things to go is their, is their healthcare, mental healthcare, physical healthcare. So I'm glad that that's on your radar and I'm sure that there's plenty of opportunities in the future for, for many organizations in this community to work together on trying to improve the housing stock.
How confident are you on the staffing of the, the new facility? I know there, heard that there were challenges and that it didn't get licensed of the previous facility that opened in 2019 that we assisted you with, that that did not actually get licensed and didn't get used as, as we were originally told it would be. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, I don't know, Jay, I'm going to let Jay take that one because he is the one that is 100% responsible for staffing. And COVID hasn't helped some with the, with the Prime West though.
Sure. So the, the detox part of the building is licensed differently at two different levels of detox. One is just a room in the building somewhere where there's not oversight. The other is medical detox, which has a nursing component and a higher level of supervision and pharmacology to assist people that are going through the detox themselves. And so that was the one that we wanted to put in there, but that wasn't really the one that was planned in the first place. And so the licensing of the medical detox is what we need in the region. It's kind of currently being done in the hospital. To be able to license that program, we needed six beds as a minimum. When the building was built, it was built to allocate four and then tend to the other service lines. So what we're asking for now between Becky and myself and the state is a waiver of the six beds, but there still would have to be some to four, to be some construction maybe. And then if we can't do that, then we'll move the room up and the doors up and come for six beds.
Didn't you, didn't you know that going into it, that it would require six beds?
State's gone through significant changes in the definition of withdrawal management just in the last couple of years. And many of the decisions were made before some of us came on board in terms of that project and what it should look like. And so ever since the, the beginning of that project, there was some planning and some pieces laid out, but we took it to another level because the needs in the community were more intense. And making it more secure and making the building a little bit higher level of detox management, we ended up having a licensing problem. Because I don't think the level which they would have licensed the hundred or beds is what's needed in the community. They need the nursing oversight and the pharmacology and those pieces and that's what the challenge.
So where's, where does it sit right now? Are you waiting for legislative or, or state approval or?
Identifying the right person within the system to locate to have that conversation on submitting a waiver is not always easy with the Department of Health and finding those people with licensure. Those kinds of buildings have to be licensed by multiple different agencies. The Department of Human Services as well as the Health Department. And so getting everybody kind of to agree that this is an outlier and that we have a hospital across the street for medical supports, because I don't think they would consider a waiver if we didn't have the medical supports available. And so we have a very unique situation to bring forward to get all the stakeholders kind of bought in. And so again, I think we're, we're probably going to be able to bring it up this year, but that's been really the challenge. The staffing of it is no different than the type of staffing that we have in other components of our programs, the direct care staff, nursing, et cetera.
And I would say, I wasn't here when it was planned either and I'm not sure if Jay wasn't either, but what I've been, what my understanding is, is that regulations changed at some point between the planning and the actual construction of the number of beds, the number of beds.
Okay, and then the new facility and staffing and any perceived challenges there with the new facility?
No, we have a timeline to ramp up. And so we have targeted dates in our ROI where we've hired different calibers of folks. But we also have several of the high-level clinicians that are the hardest to fill are already on staff. And so I'll be taking some of my clinicians that are outpatient clinicians, we've been moving them into the hospital and adding direct care and nursing staff. So there really aren't any positions in there that are completely unique to us in our system. But I'm not going to say that the direct care has been a challenge for us at all services. That's one of the big challenges for Prime West. It's just putting people at that entry level salary range. And so we've been, I think we've tried to do a good job of investing in that and raising the salaries at entry by about five or $6 on average so that we're able to recruit people into our higher career job and compete at that level. So hoping that that we are built more ability to recruit as time goes on, that they're not unique physicians. And so the challenge has been to maintain people over the last two years.
Yeah, we, we've done a really good job of adding different types of providers that we need from the health. So I have a psych, we didn't have psychiatrists until about a year and a half ago. And we have a psychiatrist now, we have.
A pediatric psychiatrist now. We started with two advanced practice nurses. We now have eight and we're recruiting another adult psychiatrist. So we have a number of adult psychiatrists.
And what's really, it's just, I don't know if it's inspiring, but this team hears so much about what they do and taking care of our patients. It's just pretty astounding the work that they do.
I'm confused. We had this, years ago, we were talking about this mental health issue in our community and we need to do something about it. So we partner and we do a facility. In 2019, 2020 and 2021, we admit 67 people. That's 22 people per year or two people a month. What?
Well, they stay 90 days, so that's, so they stay.
I'm confused, but I mean, we have this huge, this huge problem supposedly in our community.
Right.
And we're only going to take care of two people a month.
Right.
In a facility. And now we partnered with you to do another facility because we have this mental health crisis around the country and in our community. I, I don't see it getting taken care of very well. I, I'm sorry, I just, I have to be, I'm pretty critical here because I've been tracking this and been watching it for quite a while and it's not, we're not getting anything done.
So I'm going to have, I'll start with Jay first and then I'll let you, I'm going to have to disagree with you 100% because there's like, you're talking about one building, the Prime West building. We are seeing hundreds of patients every month through our outpatient clinics and our emergency department in our hospital. And so the Prime West building is one, is specific to the 90-day program and then the acute 10-day program. And so it just meets a, a little bit of the need that we have in the community. And so the, the need that we have in the community is broader than just one building with 10 beds in it. And we are, you know, like Jay was saying, the number of psychologists that we have, psychiatrists that we have, the staff that we have, our medication assisted therapy clinic for patients who have addiction, all of our addiction counseling, all of the work that we do to get, help people with housing and things like that. It's not just one building over in the Prime West building. So I, and I'll jail that you add to that.
First, I'd like to say I, I appreciate your investment and your energy. I, I match that. And so I have a passion for the services too. To answer your question, there was a legislative auditor's report that was done from the first $2 million. It tells you where every dime went and it didn't all go to the Prime West facility. So I want to clear that up for you, but I'll, I'll make that available if you'd like it. The other thing is that when that report was written and those resources were allocated, there was an acknowledgement in the region that much more was needed. And so to make this a mental health problem, individuals have needs at all different levels of complexity. And what we've tried to do is to meet them where they are. And so when I first came on board, we didn't have a psychiatrist. We now have 11 providers in the community that are prescribing accurately, not having other people do that. I think that alone speaks volumes. But rather than to sit and, and give you the list of things that was accomplished, I would certainly welcome Ernie or Beck to the table to talk about what improvements have been made in our collaboration, because it isn't a Sanford issue. We've been working at the table for three solid years and figuring out things from the jail to people at intake, to what's going on with the county in terms of people in the hospital with court commitments. And so we've been actively engaged in partnerships for three years now. And I think we've certainly been able to resolve some issues, but there are just so many in the community that we started with and then COVID hasn't made it better. And I know everybody understands that. And so at the end of the day, I, you know, the scrutiny and, and the asking of questions, we, we welcome that because I think it allows us to show some success. The Prime West building was one service line. There were four that came out of a million, $2, $2 million grant. So again, I, I have no problem submitting to you indicators of services. The Prime West program and the individuals that it takes is very narrowly tailored because you can't take somebody that's very fragile, that's been out of the workforce for quite some time and mix them with somebody that's potentially bad. And so the admissions process alone that the state has put in there is narrowly tailored who could be admitted.
Well, then I'll apologize for my confusion, but if you come forward to the board to bring us statistics about how we've been treating mental health and when I ask a question and say that I'm confused, the first thing you say is that we've been doing a whole bunch of stuff that you haven't told me about. Can you see where my confusion might be? I would have liked to see the statistics that you just told me that you have, that you've been treating them at the hospital and not just at this facility. I would have liked to have seen that, that we're, we're starting to accomplish and solve a problem. And that's what we're looking for. That's what we've been asking for, is how are we going to address our mental health issue across our country and how are we going to do that in our region? And I'd like to see some of those statistics on if, you know, what you showed me was 67 admissions in three years in a facility. You answered the question why it's only 22 per year or basically we're only serving two people a month, which is not much in my estimate. So I'll, I'll remain confused on that a bit until I can get more information. Second question I had was the, the statistics that you presented, Susan, there's a whole bunch of statistics about hospital demographics and average bed stays where I believe 78, when you have 100 and something capacity. Did you exclude the virus? So that is including. So our, our healthcare facility did pretty good through this whole virus situation of starting in 2019, 2020, 2021, when as a community, we were very concerned if we're going to have the facilities, right? So by the statistics that you presented, it looks pretty good. I mean, we, we didn't max, we didn't blow it out, we didn't go way beyond. So we handled it, looks like that it was handled very well by Sanford by doing the things that you told us you were going to do, moving some folks out, creating more ICU beds. But the statistics don't look like we hit, you know, we didn't max it out.
So you have to remember that's an average daily census. So some days are higher and some days are lower.
And how long, how long were those statistics based? How, how far back did you look?
That's just a year annually, so 2021. So doesn't include the surge from 2020, but I think you're, you're very correct. And you know, the big concern we had at the beginning of COVID was, are we going to get like completely maxed out? Are we going to, I mean, we had plans if we needed to convert the whole facility to just COVID and what we were going to do with the other patients and those types of things. And it didn't bear out like, you know, the initial like kind of, oh, we're, you know, everybody's going to get COVID and they're all going to come to the hospital at the same time. And you can argue why that was, whether it was mitigation strategies or whatever it was. But the bigger other, maybe not bigger, but probably equal level concern we had was facilities like negative air pressure and, and you know, respiratory virus. And we didn't have a lot of rooms with negative airflow and we had the semi-private rooms and that kind of thing. And that's why we converted the fourth floor. We made it completely negative airflow and we did ward-style beds for that first surge that we had. And the, the highest number of patients we had at one time in the hospital in that initial surge with COVID was 45. So over half our patients were COVID patients at that time. And we were not doing, you know, nearly as many electric procedures and that kind of thing. So the volumes, other places were down. That's another way that we were able to manage it. And then, so the number that I showed you for average daily census, again, there's some other patients. again, there's some other patients in the hospital on top of that that are not in a inpatient status or like the observation or the outpatient. So generally, we run between eighty and ninety patients in the hospital every day. And of those right now, as of today, nine are COVID. So, so it's a, it's a, you know, it's definitely the percentage is decreasing. And I do think that the response that we were able to employ did, did work.
Last question, Mr. Chair, last question, again, kind of numbers related. The, the sixty-seven admissions limited by staffing, licensing, all of that sort of thing. Is, was that the maximum that you could take care of based on all of those variables?
There was a screening process for COVID coming in, so at that time, that was.
Okay, and that's what I, again, want to know the numbers, why we only treated that many? And it was because of mitigating circumstances, this, that, and the other thing. So in the future, hopefully that will go up. The number of folks we can treat over there?
And, and with the addition of the detox service as well, but those beds are just empty right now.
All right, well, we're running against time here and I want to see if Commissioner Anderson has any, any questions or comments.
No, I think, I think the stats prove themselves out as they covered the, the whole spectrum rather than just the one building. Thanks.
I'm happy to bring back other statistics. We were asked specifically about the Prime West buildings, but well, we included that. But happy to bring back, I'm really proud of, of the inroads we've made in the mental health community.
Do we have copies of what this presentation or could we get a copy of that?
Diane.
Diane has it, so she can send it out. Mr. Chair, I just have one other question, if I could, and quickly. Is my understanding that the Sanford Health employees are being required to use the Sanford Mental Health and psychiatric as well as other, other facilities that they're not allowed to use outside facilities in our community? And could you speak to that or why, why that would be if we're trying to help all the, all the people in the community? Why would they limit those to only being able to use Sanford, which may not have the capacity?
So I'm, I'm not sure if you're referring to the insurance. So if you have insurance through Sanford and you're on the Sanford Health plan, then you're in network to see a Sanford Health provider. And you're out of network if you see a non-Sanford provider. And you can see someone out of network. It does just, it, it's more out of pocket expense for you. And so the health plan goes through an iteration of looking at what services we're able to provide. And then obviously, if we're able to provide the service, then, then we would like for the patients, for our staff that are on Sanford Health plan to use that service, you know, for, for a lot of different reasons. But you can still see other providers, but it usually is.
That just changed recently, didn't it?
The, the changing around some of the mental health providers as we've added services within Sanford and, and been able to provide the, meet the needs that we have, then yes, that has been a, I think, also a need plan.
All right.
Monitor that very.
So, so we're really running against the time here and we do have a couple of other items on our agenda that are just as, as important. And I want to thank you, Susan, for, for coming forward. And, and it sounds by the, by the questions and conversations that we've had today that, you know, we would, we would welcome another presentation.
Thank you.
All right, so that will bring us to item six, the Northern Township Infrastructure Update. Mr. Bear?
That's right, sir. My name is Justin. I know this is probably, this is outdated, it'd be new information to a lot of you guys. I'll try to be, kind of be a little synonymous of what's kind of going on, give some time for questions. What's kind of happened over the last couple of years is for a number of years, there's been this conversation about sewer and the Comidji. And when this started a couple of years ago, what the Hundred and Twenty Project started a conversation that started amongst the city and the township, it kind of fizzled out a bit because of COVID. They didn't have meetings and stuff together. But in that time, a few other things that popped up, primarily Rutgers, Birchmont Lodge has needed services at their facility and then also VNR and the state park has said that they needed services. And this is kind of brought us more to the forefront as far as that there's a need in the community to get services to that side of the lake always wanted, but never really done much at all. We held a meeting with our residents in Northern Township about last, since then last fall, I think, October. And the resounding part was people weren't necessarily against getting services, but they were not in favor of annexation. So that has forced the city and the township to start talking about what can we do? In early January, we had a meeting with the city and the township together, a joint meeting. And it was, we presented a, an option about saying that we would try to, how we can do this and that maybe our residents, they have a little surcharge if they wouldn't have to be annexed because we don't see an avenue with annexation where our residents are going to be on board. The city then has came back with a number of options and one of them included that the township is placing infrastructure in the ground, but at our expense, obviously, without the township, they wouldn't have to be annexed and then some type of surcharge. This has all happened within about a month, a month and a half, so it's been a very short timeframe. And with that, we've had to kind of start scrambling, knowing that Rutgers has a need very soon and the county projects coming up in two years also. We've taken that opportunity and we've been able to hold some legislatures in different places to submit a bonding request into a representative list. And there's now a couple, he's got two different cases on that and others that we submitted in for hearings possibly. We've also been working with them financing about some options, what would it take? And what, what those things would have to be done if we didn't do a long-term, like these forty-year financing grants. We don't offer or qualify for a lot of grants in Northern Township. Um, there's a, the household income in Northern Township is not qualified for it to be at certain levels. So we have to go through some of these areas. We've also put in a federal grant to Representative Stover. So we put one where we can. What we're looking for here today is basically for a couple of things for questions from you guys. And then also looking for basically support from the, from the county saying that the more that with these, as they go forward to these areas, they like to see support and collaboration. And right now, that's what we're kind of in the process of doing is answering questions. If there's any concerns from the commissioners, we'd love to have that. And if not, we'd love to like see if there's a possibility of getting some support. The, the big thing that we're trying to look for here is this has been a fifty-year plus conversation about trying to take care of our lake. We have sewer lines going crossroads, combining back lots, people are subjects that haven't been touched for forty, fifty years. That we know this is a need, it's something that we, and this is an opportunity. And this is where we're taking it at right now and it's, we know we're coming at a short end and asking something in a real big hurry here, but that's where we're kind of at. And I guess, open for what you guys have for questions from there.
If I could start, Mr. Chair, since it's in my district. What I've heard from the folks that have contacted me is there's still a lot of bad feelings and vibes from the Birchmont North piece. I echo your sentiments about the non-annexation because again, annexation without services is, is it has that, that doesn't set well with taxpayers. So if you go forward with, and Jess, you and I talked a bit about this. If you go forward with a sewer district approach, I, I know of several of those examples and there's lots of templates that we can talk to and, and discuss with. You, you set up a sewer district, you base the assessment on the amount of usage that any entity might get. And in this case, offer non-connection if you prove and get the system that you have is compliant enough to speed. So now you do kind of everything, right? You get the folks that two years ago put fifteen thousand dollars into their septic system on the north end of Lake Comidji. They aren't forced to connect up to a sewer system. And then you have to address that situation so that you say, there has to be some type of a, of a grandfather clause. Like, we'll let you do that for fifty years or until the, the current system is non-compliant, then you must connect up. So you, you'll have to get your wording together on that. But I think you'll get a lot of buy-in if you take that approach. And we're going to get buy-in from the other folks that say, well, everybody should connect up. No, what we're going to get is the folks that are non-compliant, they either need to put in a new fifteen thousand dollar sewer system or connect, right? Or if you're non-compliant, then it's probably economically going to work out that you're better off connecting up to the, to the central sewage system rather than developing a private sewer system. So if you gotta let, you gotta give the folks the chance. And I would say that if you do that, more than likely, the people with a non-compliant old forty, thirty, forty, fifty-year-old system would say, man, you know, rather than putting it into a mound system and a tank and all of that, let's just connect into the pipe. And then as soon as you connect into the pipe, you pay your percentage, your assessment piece of how much are you using that? And I think you'll get good buy-in if you take that approach with the folks that I've talked to. And I've talked to quite a few of them along that north end of Lake Comidji. And the, the big three businesses, the Town Country Club, the VNR, and Rutgers, it won't go as far as the park, though.
That's the, that's the plan is they make it at the park too. They want it to go to the park and they're.
That would be the end of it.
Yeah.
And then last thing, and then I, because I know we're trying to do a little bit of catch up and have some things to do. The last one is, do we have a city municipal system that can handle more questions?
From the conversations that we've had with the city, they say that they can handle with the upgrades that they've done recently, it can handle this capacity. So they said that that's part of it. Part of the district stuff, that is something that we've talked about briefly, but with kind of the temps, because we haven't gotten to yet. But I do echo you that that makes a lot of sense to look at that path in the future to do that.
Because then the sewer district is charged by the city or what they're, they're sending downstream.
So, and that's some of the technical, I know that it's a big technicality, but like as we've been into this, that's one of the things that we would like to sit down and talk to, to them very shortly.
A major sewer district just went online in northern Minnesota around a real critical lake, Rainy Lake. They did, I believe, three sewer districts, an east, a north, and a, and a west. Very complicated system, but if you want to do your homework, the county board up there, Wade Pavlik, was very instrumental in that. And you can get ahold of County Commissioner Wade Pavlik at Cooch County. And I'll send you his contact information, Jess.
That'd be great, thank you.
And if you want to get ahold of him, I think he could be very helpful. They got, I believe they got a huge federal grant to run sewer all the way up right towards Rainy Lake. And that was a difficult project because it went through rock and lots of blasting, lots of horizontal boring, lots of, but they connected virtually every property on Rainy Lake. And they changed the setback to the lake for building to fifty feet from a hundred. So there's some, there's some big pluses in getting a real sewer system and letting people enjoy the lake while we take care of good quality water.
You're definitely right. That's one of the big selling points of the residents that they probably don't know yet. They haven't had a chance to sit down with them yet. We're more looking to have these questions about some of the funding, what the cost would be prior to sitting down with them because that's going to be the main question to everybody is, oh, we need to get some of these financing things kind of figured out first before we can get the real cost. You're totally right. That's a huge thing is about what a person's property can be done once they have this infrastructure in place and what they can, now what they can do. So that, that's very much so. And we, when our proposal that we originally made to the, to the city did include that we would do an initial inspection of these properties and things that were out of compliance, they would hook up things that were not in compliance, they would have, we haven't talked about a sunset date yet, but it would have to probably be something at some point saying that you'd have to hook up. But it'd be, if you're in compliance, many properties have bought properties to put back lots in where they put these, that are forty, fifty thousand dollars. I can't in good conscience ask any of these people to sit there now, put a bunch of money into a new assessment when they've just spent this money. So we have to be reasonable and be fair, because that's how, you're right, probably get by.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just wondering, the, the money that you're going after for the, from the state, is that, would that be a grant? Or would that be a loan that would have to do the bonding that you're looking for support on? That's what you're here for is support for approaching up the state for a bond, correct?
Yeah, it's actually, I should say for the, basically, so it would be, it would not be a payback.
Okay, so it would be a grant and it's eight to ten million, is that?
That's what we put up, that's original assessments, eight and ten million. That's pretty quick in number of words, and I do have to say before I go any further, you know, this is such a huge part of what the county's willing to do with that project to just doing that project and being able to, that's what makes this work. That's what makes so much of this make sense, we have the cost of what that project, the million, actually, just in the sections, a huge portion of that. Which makes this so much more.
More like it's more than just that we're, we're doing the roadwork, not, you got, you got the trench there, you got the.
Yeah.
Have an infrastructure, you have the mobilization, just the perfect time to lay that.
So the only exposure to the county would essentially be the, the, doing maybe a little additional roadwork while we're doing as far as financially. Okay, so are you looking for us to, to put together a formal resolution of support or just a consensus of support from our board meeting today or what are you looking for?
I guess I'll kind of, maybe I'll be administrative, see what's in mind for what would be, I mean, as you see, we're, we're new to this too, so I apologize for not being, I'm really not. But what would it be like for the, what for, just a letter of support or just a consensus from that or what would you say?
You have three options here, commissioners, one could be just an affirmative vote supporting it and then that would be documented. It's not, doesn't carry quite the weight as a letter of support that was formally written and maybe signed by all commissioners or even more so a resolution. So those are your three options.
Mr. Chair, I, I would say that we should do a resolution with a letter. I think that that'll carry the most weight and get the attention of lawmakers. I mean, this is something that we've been talking about for a long time, surely as long as I've been in elected office, which isn't that long really, but you know, and I'll, I just want to quickly say that Doc Thompson is smiling down on us right now. Because this is really something that he's been fighting for, for, for decades, literally decades. And, and he didn't get to see it happen. But I, I'm hopeful that this will be the beginning of, of being able to wrap the whole lake in, in sanitary sewer and water.
So would we, if we did put together a formal resolution and pass that at our next board meeting, would that be soon enough?
I have a smooth hearing, it'll take a little while. We just got the, the file numbers today for the case from the legislature representative. So I'm assuming it's not going to be in the next couple of weeks.
Mr. Chair, I have, I have one, one quick question to it. And I, I've always wondered this, the, the population of Northern Township is almost as big as the town that I grew up in. Why don't you guys incorporate into a municipality?
There's things that need to happen and this is like one of the things, you have to kind of act with the city to be a.
It sounds like you're acting like a city right now. You're getting along the way, but.
Yeah, yeah. Something like this, you know, we've had a lot of things and there's a lot of open, right? We were shocked by the census numbers that came this time. We were a couple hundred people, it's bigger than many counties. And there's a lot of counties that aren't the same size.
What is the, the new population?
Forty-five hundred.
Forty-five, okay.
Just, I've always wanted to.
Glad to hear that there's sport for a resolution because I think that's the strongest message we can send.
And we'll have that drafted.
Yes, commissioners, I can have that drafted and on your next board meeting. Well, keep in mind that will be a remote meeting at Ten Lakes Town Hall, but we can certainly have it available for you there.
I'm in favor of that, Mr. Chair.
I think we could just put it on consensus for the, the next board meeting, right?
Yeah, as long as we have this, the, the, the language that we can see it and make sure that we're all happy with the language. But yeah, yeah, I don't see any reason why.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jess.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so that will bring us up to item seven, saw nine fatal crashes.
You're only fifteen minutes off, too. Way to go. Way to catch up, way to get in there. I'll move quickly then and initially, I wasn't going to do a PowerPoint for you. I, I pushed print before I left the office today and it came up with a bunch of this stuff here and I don't, even with glasses on, I'm not going to be able to read this, so thank you, Diane. I just emailed there a couple of PowerPoints. They're not quite in the order that I want them. That one there, obviously.
I like that one.
Yep. Is it up here? Here we are. First of all, our, our TZD group, based on a monthly basis, and throughout the year, we do fatal crash reviews or serious injuries. It's made up of now law enforcement, engine, road, county and highway, the city, also our EMS side of things, healthcare, trying to figure out what the, what we could have done or what could have been done to make sure that. We want to be repeat of some serious crashes. So I presented this to the TZD committee on the third, so this first crash here occurred on August thirteenth, seven twenty-five PM. Jump to this next picture here. And this is the exact location where this, this first serious event occurred on County Road Nine. Lower right-hand corner of that is the Comidji Bell Academy Town and Airport. You can see where the fencing is there for that property, where that green arrow is, is where the vehicle left the roadway. And where that box is, it's the, excuse me, the approach that put in the port area. Where the red arrow is, is where this vehicle found its道. So what happened here with this at seven twenty-five PM, a vehicle northbound County Road Nine, in Parkville Road, exiting the right-hand curve there, went across the, into the incoming line of traffic, ended up overcorrecting and doing so left the roadway, entered the ditch. People traveled for a good amount of distance in the ditch, hit that approach. People traveled for a good amount of distance in the ditch, hit that approach and that became airborne and overturned several times. And, uh, there's a, it's a, it's a fire. Sheriff's Office, Luminees Fire, Luminees Police, Luminees Ambulance responded for this crash. Structure was done by, uh, State Patrol. Some of the information in the end, I should have warned before you ask your questions, some of this information is data, private data, so I may not be able to answer. Depending on what the question is. And that I also ask you to consider the balance of asking the questions. So again, uh, first fatal event, the green arrow, second, uh, second event, the first event, the narrow second event was the, uh, box area that we had approached. Uh, it was a two thousand four Toyota RAV4 S U V occupied by the driver only. Uh, motor vehicle in transit, the, these are terms that go on, uh, one of the accident reports would include state. Uh, exiting right turn, left, left roadway, right, traveled a hundred and fifty feet. Uh, in the ditch, struck the approach with airborne for a hundred and forty-seven feet, rolled upon impact, traveling a hundred and fifty-seven feet. Uh, it was un-witnessed, uh, patch file reports, vehicle overturned on fire. Fires, there was a fire, yeah, the vehicle fired and the overrun fired. The mill was going to do that one. The driver, uh, ended up with a high blood alcohol concentration. As a result of the autopsy and subsequently died of the, uh, fire related injuries. Next, uh, one here. This one occurred, uh, just a short time later, August twenty-fifth, five thirty-eight in the morning. Occurred on this section of County Road Nine, uh, Mayflower Road is.
We can't, we can't see the light laser up here.
Okay. Blue Mayflower Road to the north here and this, uh, this was a vehicle that was traveling southbound. Bicycle, the bicycle was also traveling southbound. Uh, conditions at the time, five thirty-eight, it was very dark. This lone vehicle, uh, traveling southbound and, uh, impeded vehicle that was entering the roadway, uh, accident occurred right approximately where that nine is. Kind of go with nine, uh, slightly to the, uh, if you're looking at the left of that, self, self on lanes. Uh, self on, uh, two thousand four Ford F two fifty club cab vehicle, one of the vehicle transit, exiting right hand curve. So if you think about exiting right hand curve where your headlights are, are traveling as you, as you make the apex of the roadway. Uh, start the bike, bicyclist, uh, bicyclists, excuse me, they operate in the middle right, uh, portion of the southbound lane. Middle right portion of that circle. Uh, the cyclist was wearing all black clothing, um, personal safety equipment being used. The mark, the bike was equipped with a rear red reflector, a manual reflectors and pedal reflectors. No other external lighting in the person or the bike. No impairment of the driver, uh, vehicle mind, uh, bicyclist had a toxicology of, uh, again, almost doubled and, uh, presence of, uh. One of the notations in the reconstruction, and of course, there's no, uh, on this road, uh, there's very, very narrow shell, shoulders. Essentially non-existent, uh, uh, at least not killing the, the, the part of the exact location of the crash. Uh, rumble strips and then a little bit of cement before it's hard before they get the gravel shoulder. Uh, arrow shoulder, uh, the reconstruction has noted that there, other than that, there were bypass. So if a person traveling on the roadway, if you're trying to avoid, um, riding on the rumble strips or you have just a narrow gravel portion to the right. Most likely bicyclists could be to the left of the rumble strip and in the roadway. Any questions?
Commissioner Anderson, you got any questions for the sheriff?
No, I don't. I, I had a really hard time hearing, uh, what he had to say, but I was, I was following along.
Saying that there are no, uh, questions.
Yeah, any questions?
So, uh, this, this report here just would be public information now, if, if, if there were.
If, if certain portions are redacted.
Okay, so if anybody had questions, they could, who would they contact?
Uh, for the State Patrol's report, it'd be contacted Department of State. Uh, for our regular reports, it'd be through us, depending the photographs, uh, would need to be public information. As well, uh, but again, they'd have to be looked at each one. Lots of photos taken, I have to say. It's, it's just, it's two unfortunate accidents, again. The bicyclist, if there was a place for him to travel, could have been avoided. Don't know if they'd been riding in it, but, uh, wearing all black clothing. What a full concentration riding. Probably has a, a little bit of, uh, of a factor in making decisions.
And Mr. Chair, there's a kind of a broader context too, that this all comes in. I mean, we had asked for this report, uh, to talk about this report, um, and I mean, first I just wanted, you know, say that these, these were very tragic deaths and they're very, very unfortunate and I don't want to sound callous by shifting and, but a big part of this too is, is the, the residents of Echols and, and I think Liberty Township. I think you can say that we've gotten a lot of feedback from them about how much they dislike the road. And I have been to the Echoes Town Board a few times specifically to talk about the road. And, um, and I think that we can say that though people still dis, very much dislike the road that live in the, in the town, in those two townships and use it a lot. I, I think we can safe, aside from the fact that there's no bike path, so with the bike, would that have been prevented? It, it, could that have been prevented under the, the old striping on the road? There is a much bigger shoulder. We don't know if that person would have been in the shoulder or on the road. I mean, it was at that time in the morning, he probably thought he had the road to himself, you know, and wasn't, wasn't paying attention. Maybe he would have been there anyways. I don't know, but, um, I think we can say that the engineering of the road was not the cause of these accidents.
Our examination of the information that was collected, um, there was a totality of circumstances that caused this accident.
Yeah.
And, um, whether it be a road design, uh, would it could have, should have, um, if it had been available, if it had been used, if it had been the old right. Road, it had wider shoulders, would have been used, we don't know. But the, uh, the bikes, uh, the vice, bike one was probably the one that we, if anything, on, on engineering or design, we may have, we had more questions on. The first crash involved, uh, alcohol use and, uh, poor decision-making, unfortunately.
Well, thank you for, for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff. Oh, I, I think we're back on schedule. So that will bring us to item eight, the administrators update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a brief update for you this afternoon. Uh, just wanted to update you on a couple of things. First of all, I'll start with the jail project, uh, Justice Planners, which is the consultant that you approved to do the needs assessment and feasibility study. Will be, um, onsite and conducting interviews, uh, with the various, uh, members of our community task, our, um, advisory committees, the steering committee, uh, and yourselves on February twenty-second and twenty-third. Uh, we'd like for those commissioners that are not part of the steering committee to plan to attend one of those sessions at three thirty in the afternoon on either of the, those two days, February the twenty-second or February the twenty-third, so that you can get your input, uh, included in the needs assessment feasibility study. Uh, the report should be completed, uh, by mid-August of this year. Uh, and that will of course come back to you, uh, for your discussion and, uh, and there'll be recommendations in the report. And you'll have an opportunity to consider those recommendations and ultimately, ultimately make a decision on what to do next. Uh, but to ensure that we get to that end, we want to make sure we have as much input as we can from those, uh, that are going to be a part of this process. And of course, your input's very important in that as well. Uh, next, I want to remind everybody that the Joint Leech Lake County, uh, meeting will occur on the, uh, first of March at one P M at Ten Lakes Town Hall. Uh, I've been working with the representative from the, the Leech Lake Band of the Jibway and their tribal council, and we have a agenda that I wanted to pass out here to you um, for your quick review. And, uh, we do have some time to make adjustments to this agenda, but I wanted to go over it just really quickly. Make sure that you were, um, familiar with it and supportive of it. Uh, essentially, uh, and there'll be more detail that comes, but essentially we'll do opening remarks and a welcome, then go to introductions. And, uh, they've requested presentations and have offered a, offered a presentation briefly on understanding the basics of the, the government structure for our county, and they want to provide a similar one for their tribal council and organization. So that'd be about maybe five, six, seven minutes for each organization, provide some background and history on, on that. Uh, then they'd like to talk about formalizing a framework for cooperation going forward as part of that relationship building that we talked about. Uh, they currently have a memorandum of understanding that has been in place for some years with Cast County. And that was featured actually at the, uh, tribal forum, uh, training, a week or two ago that, uh, Commissioner Sumner and I went to along with many of the staff. Uh, and they'd like to entertain maybe, uh, having some kind of arrangement like that with Beltrami County. So I think that'd be great for us to, um, to discuss. And, uh, through that, we would create this framework of longstanding relationship building and, and expectation uh, of how to move forward when issues involve or are influenced by one another's organization. Uh, then we'd move on to current issues of mutual interest. Uh, they have included most of the issues that we had identified as well. Uh, they have acknowledged that the time that, uh, we are planning to meet, the two hours may not likely result in deep conversation on these items, but they're very willing to engage and hopefully develop a strategy for how we can continue conversations should they be needed going forward. Uh, and then, uh, we would then follow up with a summary of, uh, tasks that we were assigned or agreed to commit uh, during that present, or during the meeting. And then, uh, any next steps, including the potential, potential for additional meetings, uh, whether they be with the formal uh, elected officials from the organizations or with staff in the future. So that's what I have for you. Hopefully, uh, that's to your liking. I was impressed and appreciative of their, um, of their work to date on helping to put this agenda together. Uh, and I'll pause for a moment and get any feedback from you so that I can communicate that back. We're within two weeks now or so of that meeting and we do want to get the agendas posted and finalized, of course, so that we can advertise the meeting. So I'll pause for comments or questions.
I like it, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
That's, that's my comment. I think it looks like a good list.
Well, if it, if it meets, uh, Commissioner Olson's, uh.
But I, I think you're right that this is a, this is a pretty ambitious agenda. And I mean, if you recall, when we met with the city, the first item on the agenda took half of the time. The second agenda item took half of the available time.
Right.
And then we spent three minutes on the last six items or whatever, you know.
Right.
But, um, but I think it's, it's great. I mean, and this is a, I think this will be a, a, an historic event. I think it's the first time that the two bodies have met and so I don't expect that we will come out with any solutions or, or finality or whatever, but it's a great first, first, um, first shot, first bite at the apple.
Yes.
Um, will you be the one giving the general overview of the Beltrami County? You'll have something written up for that or?
That Commissioner Gosbich, I'm happy to do that. If, if the board chair would rather that, that's fine. I can put something together and he can make the presentation. Or if you'd rather me do it, or if you guys want to do it collectively, I'm completely open to that. Um, but, uh.
Well, I, I think he lost a couple of stars last meeting, so this is an opportunity to, to get one back.
Okay, only one. I'll do what I can. Thank you. I will, uh, I'll communicate the board's, um, favorable, um, agreement to the agenda and we'll go from there. Uh, last thing I was going to do is just to remind, uh, with that joint meeting, right after that, in the same location on March first, the Ten Lakes Town Hall, we will have our work session and our regular meeting at the normal times, three o'clock and five o'clock. And then, uh, just a couple of other important dates to remember, the A M C Legislative Conference will be March first through March third in St. Paul. And finally, uh, we do have a holiday on February the twenty-first, President's Day, and so county offices will be closed on that day. That's all I have for you.
Right. Sounds good. Thanks for the update, Tom. Um, are there any questions for Tom? If not, uh, we'll adjourn. Be back at five.
Legislative convention or conference. Both drive down, otherwise we'll have to drive down in the morning.
And for which it stands.
Nation, under God, and the result of liberty and justice for all.
They can be in a principal, you'd be better at that.
It's a time delay.
Uh oh, sorry.
Is it right?
There we go.
Any general comments from the board chair? Um, I do not have any comments for this evening's um meeting, so we will continue on to citizens addressing the board. Anyone wishing to address the county board on an item not on the agenda may come forward at this time to be recognized by the board chair. Please state your name and address for the record. Comments are limited to five minutes. A personnel complaint against an individual county employee may not be heard initially at a board meeting. Personnel complaints may be submitted to the board in writing through the county administrator's office. A person addressing the board may not use profanity or vulgar language. Are there anyone wishing to address the board? Seeing none, do we have any online? Okay, all right. Uh approval of the agenda.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Hearing no comments to wishing to make changes, I move uh with the motion to uh move with the regular agenda as presented.
We got a motion by Commissioner Anderson. Is there a second?
All second Mister Chair.
Second by Commissioner Olson. Any further discussion? Now I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Hold, motion carried. Approval of the consent agenda. A motion?
Move the consent agenda Mister Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Lukicik.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Gosbick. Any further discussion?
Just a little bit. I see that three uh sheriff employees are moving to Para. Does that, is that good news? That maybe you know they're 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 staying employed and now they're getting benefits? So I think that's a nice positive. I just wanted to make that comment.
That's how I read that. I I totally agree with you Commissioner Lukicik. With that, I'll move.
Uh, okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried. Yeah, I'm sorry. I just got a uh a message that.
On there, there's a third one. Unfortunately, he's on shift right now and stuff happens. And so hopefully we can do this uh later. Today, uh we're gonna be swearing in two of our three newest deputies, Aaron Holcivus and Adam Hansen. Um and uh two young men that first and foremost, they've decided to make uh permission their home. Uh Adam was originally from here. His father over here from Chicago County was uh his wife or residents of our area till. And uh anyhow, uh about that period, I was gonna say 2010. And uh they left and and of course, they still have ties back here. And when Adam graduated from college, uh she saw the opening for us and applied for it and uh um has uh been hired on as a new deputy. Aaron is uh from the area. And uh he formerly was a uh Luch Lake uh tribal police officer. And he comes to us again, a longtime resident of our area. And it is so nice to see him now. I I point that out because one of the things that we're looking at now in the state of Minnesota uh here locally, also around the nation is we're gonna be finding shortage of law enforcement. It's absolutely gonna be, we are close to crisis right now across our country. And uh the three gentlemen, uh they chose to come here. And uh um I'm not sure what else is gonna continue to entice them to come here because these three men could have gone anyplace and they could have written their own paycheck. And that's what we're seeing is law enforcement leadership around the state. So please keep that in mind when we come to uh talking about uh first of all hiring. And but I'll, secondly, we gotta look at retention, what that means. If you wanna have a professional law enforcement um uh team working for us, uh that's who we need to have. So um if it pleases you, sir, so that if I'd like to invite these young men up here and we'd like to go through the uh if you wouldn't mind, appreciate it. So Aaron and uh every gentleman stamp up here as well. The words that they uh are giving uh reading here, uh they're the foundation of law enforcement. Uh they hold a lot of weight with the power and job is derived where it comes from. And what they do when it comes to enforcing law people. So. John, please raise your right hand.
Sure. I'm so sorry. May I interrupt you for just a moment? Oh, you did. Okay. We were just trying to get the camera on you guys. Thank you.
Gentlemen, if you please raise your right hand. Uh what I'm gonna do, uh I'm gonna read the line to you. So I state your name. You solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support and uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and the laws of the state of Minnesota.
Support and uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the state of Minnesota.
To serve the citizens of Beltrami County, the state of Minnesota, the United States of America, honestly and faithfully.
To serve the citizens of Beltrami County, the state of Minnesota, and the United States of America, honestly and faithfully.
Be loyal to my supervisors and fellow deputies, and obey and enforce the law without fear, favor, or discrimination to class, color, race, or creed. And have to curse the whole myself and others accountable for our actions.
To be loyal to my supervisor and follow his and obey and enforce the law without fear, favor, or discrimination to class, color, race, or creed. And have to curse the whole myself and others accountable for our actions.
Duck myself at all times in accordance with the highest moral standards that any act would fight, spread it up, Beltrami County Sheriff's Office, or any member thereof.
Duck myself at all times in accordance with the highest moral standards and never commit an act that will apply like discredit on the Beltrami County Sheriff's Office or any member thereof.
And help those in danger or distress in a necessity arise with all my life and strength for the.
Help those in danger or distress and if a necessity arises, lay it out of my life rather than serve, thwart, or attack.
And at all times fulfill my oath as Beltrami County Deputy.
And at all times fulfill my oath as Beltrami County Deputy Sheriff.
All this I solemnly swear to the best of my knowledge.
All this I solemnly swear to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. Uh we've been doing this uh, this is something that started uh long ago, but it's carried on with Sheriff, holding up and then myself. We swear in every employee of our Sheriff's Office. Every one of them were very vital to our operation. We couldn't do it with any, without anyone doing our division. So we 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 look at these words. Again, they're the foundation of what we do and how we do our job. They're they they mean just so much to us and so important. So after I get signed up, I'm gonna have these gentlemen sign. Please will go to the reporter's office and get reporters a little document and go back to their personnel. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you Sheriff.
Thank you Sheriff and thank you Deputy.
Welcome aboard gentlemen.
Thank you. All right, we will continue on to item nine, ARPA standard allowance. Tom?
Thank you Mister Chair. Um this is a fairly straightforward request uh for formalizing a decision by the board uh to allow staff uh and the county for that matter to take advantage of the Department of Treasury's final rule uh which allow for American Rescue Plan dollars, uh which does allow recipients to make a one-time election uh for the revenue loss category to claim a standard allowance of up to $10 million. Uh what this essentially means is you might recall that um there was a formula in the initial rule that uh for revenue loss organizations had to apply uh the formula. And we were not eligible last year. Uh so many other organizations were not eligible either. Uh this new final rule allows for um organizations across the country that were recipients of the American Rescue Plan dollars to essentially make a one-time election up to $10 million and put that amount into essentially their general operating uh budgets. And that provides much more flexibility in the utilization of those funds. There are still some caveats to the use of those funds, even though they would go into the general operating uh budgets of organizations. And so for that reason, we wanna keep the uh the ARP oversight committee to ensure that we're still complying because we have to track those dollars separately uh and report on them. And then we would use the budget committee, uh just as we did last year, to continue to evaluate these projects and those funds. Uh so what this really does, what we're requesting is to allow us to utilize up uh, you know, up to the allowable amount of those dollars into, you know, the the general operating budget, giving us greater flexibility. We just, we'd like to request that formally. So for the auditors and also for our reporting with the federal government, uh you know, we're, we've done what we need to do to make sure that we can use the allowance.
For sake. Move that, well, go ahead Commissioner Anderson.
No, I was just going to uh say for sake of uh moving on to a discussion, I would move this uh motion.
And I will second it.
Here we got a motion by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Gosbick. Um and any further discussion?
Pretty straightforward.
Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posed, motion carried. So it looks like we come to the commissioners' business items, legislative lobbying issues.
Wanna combine it with Commissioner.
Sure.
Yep. Um I went to AIS meeting. Um it didn't get, didn't get real heated, but it 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 by the end, we kinda came back around to the kind of the same idea. Um I I've gotten a lot of contact, and when I say a lot, you know, remember it's not more than 10. But I get folks saying, you know, uh why are we doing the the inspections at the boat landings and all that sort of thing? So to cut to the end of it is, we we are all in favor of clean water. And that's the end result is we still wanna do that. The problem with the statistics is that we just continue, no matter what we do with the boat inspections and all of that, we still get, the next lake gets zebra mussels and the next lake gets starry stonewort and the next lake gets uh spiny water flea. And so i- it's kind of inevitable, but it's more of how to stave it off and how to slow that progression. And we're 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 really a pass-through because we don't, the county board doesn't levy any dollars into that, right? Everything that Bruce Anspach does and everything we do with all of our advertising and all of that is all pass-through dollars from the state. So just to kind of get, keep you guys in the in the loop is that what we're trying to make sure we accent is the education piece. The more we educate the people on trying to keep that the the spread from continuing and from growing exponentially, it's gonna grow a little bit. We know that. So anyway, I think we're we're all in agreement on that fact that we're gonna accent the education piece. Try to, you know, ke- keep people educated on how to do all of that. The problem we have is our society just continues to be more and more mobile with bigger and bigger boats. And you have people that go from Minneapolis to the Brainerd Lakes area, from the Brainerd Lakes area to Malax, from Malax to Leech, from Leech to Red, from Red to Lake of the Woods. And then there's another cycle up the other side of the state that goes from um pe- peels up and it goes to Vermillion Lake and then Cab Togoma and so forth. So you have this that, you know, 60 years ago, we didn't, we never had that. A boat got in a piece of water and it stayed there. You put your boat in once and it never moved around, but we have a whole different way of uh of running things. So we we agreed on that and we were uh, we have a pretty good group of folks that aren't just all one, you know, one direction. But we agree that we have to keep a big emphasis on that education piece. And and the more we can educate, the statistics are still 98% compliant.
But that's, I, you've, you said that in the past, it's like we hit 98%, but.
Can't get, we can't get better.
It's just that it only takes one, one dirty boat or whatever.
Exactly. And that 2% is what's doing it. And then the example I always give is, you know, um I know Rainy Lake and that whole watershed. And there's a a pristine set of real deep trout lakes, bass, and in the middle of the peninsula. And they're already uh contaminated with spiny water flea. They came in on float planes. So now in Voyagers National Park, in order to go into those interior lakes, you can't take anything. You can't kayak, you can't uh portage anything in, you have to get a key from the Voyagers National Park. You walk in a path, you go to a canoe that's sitting on a lake, you unlock the canoe, you canoe out to a pristine uh primitive campsite. You come back, you lock the canoe back up and you walk back out. So it, that's kind of the way of the future is to how do we control it, stave it off as best you can? And then start relying on the research in the future to see how do you treat starry stonework? How do you treat zebra mussels? Um I think they've come up with some pretty good treatment processes for uh what was the the big uh the big weed that we had years ago?
Stony starwort?
No, before that.
Mill foil.
Mill foil.
Yeah, yeah.
Eurasian mill foil. That was the real, that was the beginning kinda in our whole history of AIS was the mill foil. And I think they've figured out how to control that and how to keep it going. So.
And they're even making some headway with stony starwort.
Yes, they are, yeah. They're finding it's it's very, very fickle, you know, and it's really easy to disrupt it.
Yeah.
Um and I think I've said this before, in Europe, starry stonework is actually an endangered species.
Can we sell it back to them?
It really is. I mean, it's it's like endangered over there. They don't know where where it's going and how, it's not multiplying. So anyway, it, that's a pretty interesting uh committee assignment. It's the only one I'll report on today. And legislatively, uh I'm good too. Thanks.
Uh I will legislatively, I'll be going down uh in two weeks. Probably be leaving uh from the, from the Tenlake Town Hall down to St. Paul for the legislative session or for the the legislative conference for the AMC. Um I've been meeting with uh the Beltrami, I'm the liaison to the Beltrami HRA. We've been meeting quite a bit, kinda talking about, I think we're, you know, the HRA is a really limited function right now. It's pretty much, we have some scattered sites that we rent out or they rent out, I guess. Um and uh and then they have the Conifer Estates. And they're, they, they're doing really great at Conifer Estates, but for the housing needs of our community, it's a kind of a drop in the bucket. And so I I'm hopeful that we're gonna start looking at more ways to to bring more supportive housing and workforce housing and, you know, moderate income housing into the, into the, into the community, which we so desperately need. So it's been pretty, I enjoy being on that, um on that. Well, I guess I'm not on the board, but I enjoy meeting with the board and listening to what they're doing. And hopefully they will be able to expand their mission and and create more units in the community because that's just what we need. Um so that'll be it for my report. Thanks.
Could I comment to Commissioner Olson? Um, you know, I I'm heavily involved in that stuff, right? What we need to do, Reed, and what you need to go down and advocate in St. Paul, and I try as much as I can. We need to quit having so much oversight. Cause uh like the Conifer project, it it's costing us $250,000 a unit to create a housing unit. Because of the funding cycle and the oversight and the regulations and the Minnesota housing and the green criteria and the this and the that. You know, if we could just get back to create a housing program that allows creative designers to produce really good efficiency apartment type living units that would get a, you know, a good warm environment for one person. And then create really nice single bedroom homes for uh, you know, single people that are out of housing, you know, to to try to get a better definition of how to create 60 units instead of taking us two years to create 32 units.
Right.
And cost us six and a half million dollars to do that.
Yeah, and that, and I think you, I think you know this, um I'm sure Commissioner Lukicik, but but for all of that extra cost, we would have had a um uh a health uh childcare component to Conifer Estates. But that had to get scrapped because we couldn't, we couldn't afford the whole project. And so that was the easiest thing to get rid of because we need the housing.
Right.
Yeah, right? Uh but we would have had that, we would have had um.
Right, because the the way that whole housing development went is they did the first one. And then the second one had a community center in it. And and then the third one was to have the childcare piece so that then all three of them could use the community center. All three could use the childcare center. So it, we we just need to advocate for simpler delivery methods and simpler units in order to create good, warm housing units for the right amount of people and the right size. And when, when that cost per unit goes up so high because of all of the bells and whistles you gotta put on it, that's where we just can't, we can't produce enough.
We have some pretty dilapidated stock right now, but the only thing worse than dilapidated housing stock is not having that housing stock, right? So we're kind of in a pickle.
Right.
Where we we, you know, yeah.
And if you wanna do some research sometime, we did some really nice uh uh high-density apartment-type units, walk-up units in the Park Rapids area. We did a s- a series of them one year and then a series of them the next year. And the cost per square foot was very, very low. And it, because it didn't have a lot of strings attached, that all we had to do is meet Minnesota code minimum size requirements of bedrooms. We did lots of nice two-bedroom units with good kitchens, good dining rooms, very simple design, very straightforward. Uh I just, I I, and I advocate for that whenever I can with Minnesota Housing Finance, with all of my legislators. I I just, I I I get frustrated, Reed. I just, it it it's tough because I see it firsthand.
Yeah.
So thanks for letting me tag onto that. But you know, you and I have similar uh similar issues on that and that we need to do it. And how to solve that is a complicated solution.
Right, overly at times.
It is.
If it like, I mean, the the, the answer to homelessness is housing. It's just such a straight, you know, it's a pretty straight line.
Exactly.
Sorry, thank you Mister Chair.
Mister Chair, did you wanna ask Commissioner Anderson that we kinda skipped over his spot there?
Oh, yeah, Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, just uh in in attending the jail committee meeting the other day and and listening to justice planners and and what their hopes are, uh I I'm convinced that they're not coming in with any plan that's a set in some formula or some plan. They're waiting to hear from all the constituents that are involved. So uh I'm hoping that people will have an opportunity. And if you have some concerns, be sure to express those next week when we have that opportunity to meet face to face. Thanks.
Commissioner Roser?
Thank you Mister Chair. Um just a few things legislatively, just like to mention that the uh redistricting at the legislative level of the courts have done, uh come out with that. And so now the city of Bemidji should be able to move forward with getting their redistricting done. And then ultimately, we will be able to do our redistricting, um just for the, those that are listening. Um had my Castle Lake Rural Fire Association meeting uh last week. And uh um our audit that we had done came out clean, so that was really good news. And I got elected as the chair of that board as well. So I guess uh and then uh had our jail finance committee meeting and that went really well. Uh Bruce from Ellers Corporation, our our finance, financial advisor, um really gave us some really good numbers and uh kinda getting us, getting us uh on the right track there. So looking forward to working with them and and uh end the meeting next week with the justice planners. That's it.
All right. Uh for myself, I guess I also want to mention that the maps came out. I'm not too sure how that really may uh affect us here at the county. So I guess any, any feedback or comments that I would, I would.
It'll be, we have to wait for the city to do their, the cities to do theirs. And then, and then what we still have, the, what is it, April 26?
Yep.
Deadline for for us?
Yeah, they've got until March 29th and we've got until April 26th, but hopefully we'll get it done before then.
Uh for commissioner reports, uh I attended the AMC tribal uh county uh relations meeting. I thought it was pretty informative.
I heard it was very well attended.
Yeah, it really was. I think maybe almost close to 150 people. So I mean, it's uh, it's pretty, pretty impressive for being the first one. Um I had a few members from, from the county here. Uh Tom went, uh I believe Becky uh presented over there about the the tribal initiative that uh that we support um in Red Lake. So that was good. But other than that, um I believe that is all I have to report. There are no other questions, comments, uh can review the meeting schedule.
I think I have the next management team on the 9th of March and I just did chat about today. I nailed it.
Good for you. I'm proud of you, Reed.
Thank you, thank you, Richard.
Tom?
Uh thank you Mister Chairman. Uh since you're talking about schedules, um you might. I'm trying to keep us from violating an open meetings law. Um so recall, I mentioned that February 22nd and 23rd is when justice planners will be here. And um it would be good if we could get the three commissioners that are not on the steering commis- commission or steering committee to meet during those times, but we don't want all three of you at the same time because that will create a quorum. So um if we could get two on the 22nd and one on the 23rd, that would be ideal.
We already have the 22nd handled with Reed and I.
Okay, is that, okay, was that, I I saw those emails today, but I haven't opened them yet.
So that's been arranged.
Or I should say, I opened them and I tried to skim them, but I didn't. Right, so Sheriff.
I know that Tim's already gonna be there, so.
Do you intend, so like the the planning, uh sorry, I'm on the programming, right? The programming committee is gonna be meeting with them as well. So the intent is that I would meet with them, with the programming committee and then again with with uh, okay.
So focusing your um your thoughts with them, being on the program committee and then focusing your thoughts as being a.
As a commissioner, okay, super. Thank you.
So we're missing one slot there. Uh you had two on the, two on the one day and two on the other day.
And I'm asking Tim to hang out.
I'll do what I have to.
I'm looking forward to it. It's the, I I apologize for all the emails today. Uh again, it was uh multitasking was a challenge today and I kept getting interrupted and go back to it. And uh next thing I know, I.
After all this, you'll, you'll be like one of the most qualified people to herd cats, you know? I mean, this is just a.
I will agree with that.
Yeah.
But do not, I'm not gonna take any job working for uh a hospital setting up people's appointments. I have to.
Motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Thank you.
Have a good night, Richard.
Have a good night.
Richard, practice your pledge of allegiance.
Yeah.
Watch her lips.
Yes.